I call the meeting to order. Good evening. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam, and on behalf of council, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the city clerk. Council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. So first, staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw. And the floor will then be opened to anyone in attendance that wishes to make his or her views known on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered on any given bylaw will be given the first opportunity to speak, and then we'll go open the floor to any others that want to speak. And I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications, but there's some rules. It's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw, either with council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who may be opposed to your particular point of view. We're pretty clear on this one because we do want to make sure that everyone feels as comfortable as possible to get up and express their point of view without any feeling of intimidation. So we ask that you restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, that you be as brief and concise as possible, and we're asking speakers to respect the five-minute time limit in order to allow everyone to speak. If you want to speak more than five minutes and you have good stuff, please come back up to the microphone after others have spoken. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. Please refrain from clapping, from booing, from cheering, any presentation tonight, even those that you agree with. So as chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive or becomes repetitive of views that that speaker's already made known to council members. Please note that if you wish to provide a written message, that you want to be part of the written record for tonight's meeting, you must hand that in to Mr. Gilbert prior to the adjournment of that item, and then we'll be able to include that in the written package. If you don't hand it in, after we adjourn an item, we can't receive any more information on that item. It's actually the rules of public hearings in the province. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we have a regularly scheduled council meeting that will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda. However, individual council members may want to defer consideration of an item if they want more information, if they've requested more information, or they want to consider some of the information they've received. So that we will consider items, but not necessarily. I'll now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda, and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just prior to introducing the first item, I just wanted to let the people in the audience know there's an initial agenda for the regular council meeting to follow that was missing one of the items, and that's just the consideration of the RGS this evening, and that is on the official agenda. It was just not on the first copy that was put out. So item six, for those in the audience.
So if you have an item, an agenda that has only five items, there's a fresh agenda in the back of the room, I suspect.
I didn't want anyone to leave.
There we go, yes. Don't leave after the fifth one.
Item one is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 and its amending bylaws in order to designate the properties at 2601 Spurway, 1160 Lansdowne, and 1636 Regan Avenue as temporary use permit areas in order to allow the cold wet weather map program to continue operation in the upcoming winter seasons. This is bylaw 4231. Planning and development staff have some introductory comments.
Counsel, this item relates to a text amendment to allow the continued operation of the cold wet weather map program on three existing church sites: Coquitlam Alliance Church, Eagle Ridge Bible Fellowship, and Calvary Baptist Church. I think we have the graphic location of those. The temporary use permits are intended to be in place ideally until the permanent shelter at 3030 Gordon Avenue is operational. The CWW program has been operating from these same three churches since 2007 by the Hope for Freedom Society, which offers overnight shelter to a maximum of 30 people who are brought to the location and taken from the location in vans. They are, of course, supervised at all times. The program will continue in its current form and capacity with no changes proposed. The temporary use permit is new for Coquitlam as the local government act now enables this mechanism, and is considered simpler than a zoning bylaw change. Approval of the temporary use permit is a different administration method for doing the same thing essentially that we've been doing since 2007, and approval will not in any way increase the number of mats or sites involved from our previous commitment across the last three years. The city of Coquitlam has, of course, taken this shorter-term approach as it allows us the greatest degree of control over the use, ongoing monitoring, and reports to council at each year. Through the past three years of operation, no complaints related to the program have ever been made to either the city or to the police. Further, the police report satisfaction with the operation and are content in the way it performs. However, as an added control, the city requires a housing agreement to govern the operation of the program at each of the churches. The Hope for Freedom Society has fully complied with this agreement, and the housing agreement and time-limited approvals process was used to ensure that the program is well monitored and continues to operate without impacting the neighboring communities. The province has stated that 3030 Gordon remains the top priority for homelessness funding, and an RFP for a builder and operator has now been drafted by B.C. Housing. At this time, we're optimistic that we anticipate operation by 2014. Should this bylaw be approved by council, applications would then be made by each of the churches for temporary use permits to host the program for up to three years. This bylaw would renew the housing agreements with each of the churches. And Eagle Ridge Bible Fellowship has agreed to host only for the 2011 through 2012 season at this particular time. If alternate churches are required to participate after the 2011 to 2012 season, temporary use permit areas would again need to be established for those churches, and permit applications would have to come before council. Alternate churches would also need, of course, enter into the same standard of housing agreements that we currently use. This time, staff is recommending that fourth and final reading be given to both bylaws 4231 2011 and 4232 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. I don't have any speakers on this one, do you?
Your Worship, we have no speakers pre-registered.
That's what I have, okay. So are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just do a little screen cleanup there. Item two is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 and its amending bylaws in order to rezone the property at 2810 Glen Drive from RS1 One Family Residential to RS4 Compact One Family Residential. This is bylaw 42112. I ask planning and development staff to come forward.
Good evening, Your Worship and council members. This site is located on the south side of Glen Drive, east of Lansdowne Drive. The site is designated as Compact One Family Residential under the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the west is RS1 One Family Residential. Zoning to the north is P2 Special Institutional and P1 Civic Institutional. Zoning to the east and south is RS4 One Family Compact Residential. The subject site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site to RS4 One Family Compact Residential to facilitate the subdivision of two single-family lots. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4212. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tiffany. Are there any speakers? Oops. Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Glen Drive. Seeing none, I declare this item closed. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item three is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw 3000 and its amending bylaws in order to rezone the properties at 527 Poirier Street and 1714 Haversley Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RS3 One Family Residential. This is bylaw 4225. Invite planning and development staff to come forward to introduce this item.
Good evening again. The subject sites are located on the southeast corner of Haversley Avenue and Poirier Street. The site is designated as One Family Residential under the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the west, north, and east is RS1 One Family Residential. Zoning to the south is SS1 Service Station Commercial. The sites have a single-family residence on each of the two lots. The applicant is seeking to rezone 1714 Haversley and a portion of 527 Poirier to RS3 One Family Compact Residential to facilitate the subdivision of three single-family lots from two existing single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4225.
I have one speaker registered. It is Lorraine Johnson here, please. I'll ask speakers to state their name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Johnson, 1728 Haversley Avenue in Coquitlam, and I live right beside the two homes that are in question every zoning. Of the 11 houses on our short block, three are on holidays and have not been available to voice their opinion. Thirty-two residents on our street and in the neighborhood have signed a petition opposing the subdivision of two large lots into three smaller lots. Out of all of the houses canvassed, not one was in favor of this zoning amendment bylaw. Do you have the copy and of my letter as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I've stated reasons why we're opposed to dividing the lot into, the two lots into three. I've said that it's a long, it's an established family neighborhood with large properties, and part of the appeal, a lot of the appeal is because these lots are large. They're 79 by 138, which allows us room for our home, our garden, some privacy as well. One of the houses on the corner, well, the one on Poirier Street, there was a master gardener that lived in the home, and it is absolutely beautiful. She was entered into the garden show home and so on, and obviously if these homes are redeveloped or divided, a lot of the trees and certainly that garden space will be gone. Our other concern is that the close proximity that these houses would have to the existing homes, and I'm right next door, but we've got the setbacks of six feet, and I guess our question also would be, would this remain in effect? Should this bylaw go through, or would the zoning totally be redone so that they could have the opportunity to build even closer to the property line? And I closed by saying that there are plenty of new subdivisions in Coquitlam which offer smaller lots, and we feel that the owners should build in these existing neighborhoods if smaller single-family lots is what they desire, and we need to preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonnell.
Thank you. Through the staff, will they be, in fact, be allowed to build closer to the roadway at Haversley?
Your Worship, through Your Worship, Counselor McDonnell, the RS3 zoning has the same setback as the RS1 zoning, so there will be no change to the side yard setbacks.
Good, thank you. I was going to ask the same question. Thank you. Very good. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
If I came, I may as well come.
Yeah, exactly. Same rule, name and address.
Tammy Bryant, 1729 Haversley, across the street kitty corner to the, what we call the blue tarp house. I also sent a letter in earlier, yes. I was one that canvassed the neighborhood and the adjacent streets, and the consensus I got from everyone involved came down to three reasons, and they all expressed the same, was they all bought in the neighborhood because they wanted the tranquility of it. Even though they were like one or two blocks from Austin and Poirier, they still would like to stick with the single-family houses, with the matured trees on the lots, and not a barren subdivision, which is where they would have went had they wanted that in the first place. The second reason people came up with not wanting this to go through was it was, they wanted their spaciousness and the privacy of what they have with the matured trees already there and the houses not four feet away where you can reach out your window and ask your neighbor for a cup of sugar, as one neighborhood neighbor so politely put it. And then they also said that they wanted the low density where the kids, especially on Haversley, could still play hockey on the street and not have more traffic and more parked cars with, okay, I have a question at the end, it's going to come with it. And the fourth reason was a personal reason. I bought the home there because it's the family home, the home that my dad had built, and we would like to stay there, and I would not like to look out my window and see two monster houses close together as opposed to the beautiful trees that we get to look at now, and the lovely botanical garden that the neighbor on the corner had built. But the three questions that all the neighbors came up with doing this, you had answered the one from Lorraine. The other one was, should this go through? Will their driveway access be on Haversley or because there's a laneway? Will the parking come from the back? Will they have to build their driveways from the back? And they would like to know the percentage, the percentage now for the living space allotted in Coquitlam. Someone says it's roughly 65 to 70 percent. And is it going to go up? I don't know how he mentioned it. It was like, the percentage of your house allowed on the size of the lot?
I think staff know what you're talking about.
Do you get what I'm trying to say? Okay, and yeah.
There's a technical term, and we'll get to it. Actually, why don't we just interrupt you for a second?
And is it going to increase? Or what is it now, and what is it going to be?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Irvin.
Your Worship, there's no lot coverage or density for that matter in either the RS1 or RS3 zone, so it's really governed by the setbacks, setback provisions.
So the buildings will necessarily be smaller on smaller lots?
Yes.
So the answer was, no, the floor space ratio that applies to other types of zoning doesn't apply there. It's more, it's based on the setbacks, so the smaller the lot, the smaller the maximum house is. Most people build smaller than the maximum house, but the smaller the maximum house is.
Parking access.
And the parking access, actually, yeah.
Yes, Your Worship. The only restriction that staff have identified is for the lot on the corner of Haversley and Poirier, because Poirier is a busier road. The existing house on Poirier is going to remain, but we're going to put a covenant on the property that ensures that if that house is rebuilt or substantially modified or redeveloped, the access will have to be away from Poirier. But the other homes, given the lot size, and these are over 6,000 square foot lots, there's no specific restriction to have access off the lane.
Sorry. To be clear then, 527 Poirier, the access right now is off of Poirier. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Back to parking access. I'm still not clear on the two new lots, I would call them, fronting on Haversley and backing on the lane. Are they open as to whether they front-load or back-load? Choice of the property owner?
Yes, Your Worship, my apologies if I wasn't clear. Yeah, either of the two new lots, it would be the future owners who would have the ability to take access either from the lane or from the, or from Haversley.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll do it again. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Third and final time, any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item, item four, is an application to amend zoning bylaw 3000 and its amending bylaws in order to rezone the property at 1011 Quadling Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw 4227. Once again, I'd like to invite planning and development staff to come forward to introduce this item.
Evening again. This site is located on the north side of Quadling Avenue between the Blue and Nelson Streets. The site is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential under the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the west and east is RS1 One Family Residential. Zoning to the north and south is RT1 Two Family Residential. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site to RT1 Two Family Residential to facilitate the subdivision of two single-family lots, utilizing the recently adopted RT1 provisions, allowing the creation of compact single-family lots with a lot width of 10 meters. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4227.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? On Smith Avenue, are there any speakers to the property on Smith? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Mr. Gilbert. I'm sorry. My apologies, that was the address of the owner. This is the Quadling. We'll do that again. Are there any speakers to the address on Quadling? Seeing none. Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. The last item on the public hearing agenda. Item five is an application to amend zoning bylaw 3000 and its amending bylaws in order to rezone the properties at 615, 617, 621 Smith Avenue from RT1 Two Family Residential to RM3 Multi-story Medium Density Apartment Residential. This is bylaw 4230, and Mr. Dolly Wallace is here to introduce the item.
Your Worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dogwell, Devaun Planner with the city. This site is located at the northwest corner of Smith Avenue and Breezelay Street, just east of Coquitlam Park. The site is designated Medium Density Apartment under the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the south, west, and east is RT1 Two Family Residential. Zoning to the north recently changed from RT1 Two Family Residential to RM3 Multi-story Medium Density Apartment Residential. The subject site is currently, is occupied by three One Family Homes. The applicant is seeking to rezone the subject site from RT1 Two Family Residential to RM3 Multi-story Medium Density Apartment Residential to accommodate the development of a four-story, 72-unit apartment building. All parking will be provided underground and accessed from the lane. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4230 2011.
And this is the Smith Avenue one? I have one speaker, the applicant, Dale Staples, or the architect for the applicant, Dale Staples, please come forward. Integra Architecture, 416 Pender Street. Go ahead, sir.
Mark Alair, 7005 McIntosh Street, Coquitlam, DC. Last minute change, architect had an emergency and couldn't be here today, so I will be filling in.
Understood.
Eastern, the proposed project is located in the southeast corner of Coquitlam neighborhood. As Michael has mentioned, it'll be a four-story wood frame apartment building on top of one level of parking. There will be 90 stalls in the parcade, 14 visitors, and 76 residential private stalls. Each homeowner will get a stall, and there'll be four left over that will be included with the four largest suites. What's the trick here? I'll do it for you. Spent a lot of time working with planning and staff, and we can bend them for the availability on short notice and time, to fit this project into the neighborhood, and, you know, and there's a few key features to this project. First of all, two-thirds of the project is stepped back to over 11 meters from Smith Avenue, which we'll explain in a future slide. The two corners are stepped from three stories to four story, and particular attention was paid to the corners to articulate the design through stonework and natural features to make it fit into the neighborhood. Along with that, we're providing a two-story lobby and a very low-slope roof. Again, as you can see on this slide, you see the two corners that protrude to the normal setbacks, and then the interior, two-thirds of the project is pulled back over 11 meters. In the front, there's two community patio areas, as well as in the back, and along the right side, all of the four units will have private entrances off of the street, Brasley. On the left side is a loading bay that will triple as a basketball slash hockey court, loading bay and car wash. And from the loading bay, we've provided garden plots, as well as there'll be a compost area, and we'll be putting some water recycling containers similar to what you have in the planning department up there for the users of the garden plot to use. Okay, I think something's, that's... Again, this will identify the setbacks, and particular attention has been paid to the bottom right corner to move it in as far as we can, as well as the middle, two-thirds of the building, which you'll see is, you know, 11 meters from the property line and 14 meters, almost 50 feet from the street curb. During the discussions, there were many, many, you know, comments and discussions on how to deal with the transitioning. So here we have a section of the building on the top, our proposed building on the left. Smith Avenue and to the right, a building completed under the present RT1 zoning, built to the existing bylaws, the existing height, the existing setbacks. And then below is a section taken through the middle of our building. Again, same idea. Building on the right is the RT1 zone, built to the maximum height, existing setbacks, existing bylaws, everything. Again, we, you know, the building features stone on the two corners to articulate it. Up in the left corner, you can see the transition where we've lowered it to three stories, transition into the four stories, and, you know, worked with low-profile roofs, generous overhangs. The units on Brasley have individual entrances, and we feel it fits well in the neighborhood. There were some discussions and comments about the west elevation of the parcade due to the topography of the site that slopes down from east to west, so we've again tried to pay special attention to this area. Went back, redesigned it with our landscape architect, an architect to create a green wall and to take care of the one corner with planting. Here we show a couple sections through that wall that show the transformation from the neighbor's property line, which is shown on the left, to our building. At the same time, we lowered our building about 18 inches from previous to help offset this. And at that point, that concludes our brief presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Terry, did you have a slide that shows the landscape on the west side of the building in plan view? I didn't see it.
Just trying to get through here.
Let's try it, okay. Okay, just want to cooperate.
Perhaps I can just put it back in slide view, and I can take it back through, and you can tell me which slide would do that.
I think it's the fourth one.
Okay. You can let go of the mouse.
You let go of your mouse, and the clerk will take his, and... It's not the same as what was shown in the elevation. Okay. Can we go to the elevation then that you showed with reference to the four-story? Forward about four slides, three slides. One more? That one? Yeah, okay. Okay, Counselor Secora had some questions as well.
I'd like to see the first one, the first one that was here just before this one. Next one. Now move it up, and another one. The first one. No, the next one. Yeah, right there. That orange. That orange all the way around, is that landscaping or is that just a coloring?
That'll be landscaping.
It's landscaping. What type of landscaping would be orange?
Um, I'll defer that to our landscape architect who is here and can do a short presentation on the landscaping. He's, he's here and prepared to do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's an autumn rendering, I think. Halloween, Halloween. Sir, please step forward and state your name.
Thank you. Great, thank you, my name is John Losi, I'm the landscape architect on the project, uh, 1661 West Second Avenue in Vancouver. And I need to hear the question one more time, a little harder hearing, so, it was something about...
The question was, there, on your, on your rendering here, you show some, uh, some elements that are orange.
Orange.
Uh, some of the plant elements are orange and I suspect you're only using it for accent, but...
Could you go back to that particular slide?
This one here, the one that's up there now.
Oh, that one. I'm a colorblind landscape architect as well. And could you particularly, could you, uh, point out the, uh, the particular orange, if you... It happens.
Sir, if you could come here, I could point out on this screen perhaps more easily.
Every now and then you, you attend a public hearing and hear something you've never heard before.
Uh, the planting that we have along the, uh, let's call it, we have a retaining wall, uh, at the property line, uh, and we have, uh, conformed with the guidelines where we have got the retaining wall setback from the property line, we have a layer of planting in front of the retaining wall and, uh, just on top of the retaining wall, we have a low hedge, uh, this will be a broadly evergreen hedge and then that contains, uh, a, sort of amenity spaces and garden plots within that. Um, within the plantings on these amenity terraces, uh, we've utilized a, a lot of varieties of edible plants, fruit-bearing trees and just to enhance the, the whole environment, the experience for the people that are utilizing the space, so, uh, hopefully that will...
So it's probably a deciduous tree of some kind.
They are not oranges, but they perhaps would be, uh, the way that the artist rendered that particular plant.
Understood. You're the plant guy, there was an artist involved, got it. Is that good, Counselor Secora?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, really appreciate your help. And no other council members have questions yet, uh, so we'll open the floor to questions. Are there any speakers to this item? Please step forward. And your name and address for the record.
My name is Hildegard Richter, I live at 597 Wesley Avenue, Coquitlam.
Hildegard, could you reach forward and just pull the microphone, pull the microphone? There you go, perfect.
Like this?
Yep.
Okay. So, the development, what we just saw looks very attractive, but this is only one of the many proposals for our area for development. There are probably thousands of people planned to come into our neighborhood. And, because this is only one of these buildings, they're, that's for Cottonwood, Foster, Como Lake, Aspen, Emerson, the whole neighborhood will change and many more people will move in. And the, the problem I see is that this whole application for development is done in piecemeal, we don't see the whole story. What will happen to the people who move there, who, we have not one amenity. In years ago, we had a library and it's gone because of Poirier Library opened and then the one at Cottonwood was closed. So we have actually no community center, no library, no sports facility, very few green spaces and I see that this should be in place before any development is approved because we cannot see only one development, looks very attractive, will improve the neighborhood, but we have to consider the impact of the people who will move there and they need more than just a roof over their head. They want to have a safe environment, we would like to see a police station there, we would like to see a community center and what enhances the life of the people after they come home from work. And, so without, the only thing now I see is there should be no approval of any of these developments before we as citizens who live there and impacted by more traffic, more people, more services needed, more infrastructure needed too, that this is in place before anything goes ahead and we just invite more and more and more people. We have to live with that impact. And, you know, we are one part of Coquitlam, but we seem to be always sort of a forgotten area when it comes to amenities. There are lots of things happening in Coquitlam Center, Maladwell, but where are we? We pay taxes too and I think we have a right to get something back and, and improve our lives. I moved to my house in ninety-two and the people who lived there before, they had two boys and why did they move? Because they said there is nothing for these boys here, we would like to move closer to an area where there are sports facilities. And it has not changed in all the nineteen years. That's, that's the only thing, because also, we want to develop a livable environment, not just business, not just renting houses or selling houses, we need more than that. So that's the only, um, wish I have, that we get amenities finally for our areas and I don't know what's planned really or what has been established and committed to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Appreciate it very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Thank you, your worship. That is the last formal item on the public hearing portion of this evening.
And with that, we will close our public hearing. We'll open a regular, uh, this council meeting...